I want to call to order the April 22, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those of you that are here in the council chamber to the council chamber. Also, I want to welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10, those who might be watching us on a computer, those who might be listening to us on a computer, those who might be listening to us on the radio. This is your city government. We hope that you will partake in it in any way that works for you. So, welcome. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. I'm going to ask clerk take the roll call, the council members.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Pansky.
Here.
Tower.
Here.
Present seven.
Just a quick announcement up here. First, city manager Roloff is away on a well-earned vacation with his family. So, Mr. Fitzpatrick is here tonight to take on the role of assistant city manager. So, he'll be helping us tonight when we need some help from the administration. So, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Okay, I'd ask everybody to rise. We'll have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance led by council member Fitzgerald. We do not have students here.
Students here tonight?
They're away on vacation. They're all been somewhere.
Mr. Roloff took on my responsibility. We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple proclamations tonight, so I'm going to walk on down here if I can get down the step okay. That's Mr. Stratz to come up first. The first proclamation I have tonight has to do with the National Day of Prayer. And here's the proclamation. Whereas the Continental Congress first declared a National Day of Prayer in 1775, making National Days of Prayer a longstanding American tradition; and whereas the National Day of Prayer became law in 1952 when unanimously passed by Congress and signed by President Harry S. Truman; and whereas May 1, 2014 marks the 63rd Annual National Day of Prayer; and whereas the theme for 2014 is "One Voice, United in Prayer," which emphasizes the need for all individuals to place their faith in our Creator; and whereas millions of people from coast to coast will create a huge wave of prayer illustrating the unity of God's people over the circumstances facing us during this crucial time for our nation. And now there, now therefore, I, Burke Tower, mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 1, 2014, as a Day of Prayer in the city of Oshkosh. And I encourage our fellow citizens to join in prayer seeking God's grace and asking Him to touch the minds and hearts of our people and our leaders so that we may meet the challenges that lie before us with courage, wisdom, and justice. So, I'll present this to Mr. Stratz, who's very much involved in this and has been involved for a number of years. I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Tower. This has been an event that's been occurring ever since 1775 and regularly since 1952, and we will be celebrating it here in Oshkosh, right here at City Hall, Thursday, May 1, at 12:00 noon. Goes for about 45 minutes. We invite any of you that have some time in your schedule, just stop by for a few minutes, and we'll have some prayer activity and praying for the needs of our community and our nation. And I'd like to thank again Mayor Tower and the city council for making this proclamation as all 50 governors have also done so, and they have done so each year for many years. So, I just thank you and like to invite everyone and anyone to come Thursday, May 1, right here at City Hall, right in the front by the parking lot at 12:00 noon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stratz. Appreciate it. I have a second proclamation, so I'd ask a couple of our letter carriers to come up here. Mark, you want to come up? Dennis, you want to come on up here with me? We welcome you. Each year, we have the letter carriers do a food drive each year. I'd like to have a proclamation regarding the food drive for this year. Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing donations to local food banks. And whereas the Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than a billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas, we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities. All the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And whereas, since 1993, the city and rural letter carriers have collected and distributed more than 840,000 pounds of food to local food pantries, making this the largest annual food drive in the city of Oshkosh. Now therefore, I, Burke Tower, mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 10, 2014, as Letter Carriers Food Drive Day in the city of Oshkosh. It encourages the citizens of Oshkosh and our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on food drive day. Your letter carrier will pick them up while delivering the mail, and together, we can all help to feed the hungry. So, I'd like to present this to you two gentlemen, stress our appreciation. Would one of you like the microphone first?
I want to thank the city of Oshkosh, all of its citizens and surrounding areas for don't eating their food in past years. And I thank you, Mayor Burke, and... We're going to be passing out these cards probably on Wednesday. We're going to pass out the bags like you usually get on Thursday, and just May 10 is the food drive, and we appreciate all your help. Thank you.
It'll be two weeks from this Saturday, I believe. Two weeks from this Saturday, so, okay.
I was going to say something, Mark.
Mark, I didn't want to say anything. He plays basketball, right, Mark? Thanks, Mark. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing I have is a public hearing. And I have one public hearing here tonight, and I'll read it three times. First of all, Resolution -169, Approval of Amended Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-05, paving, grading, and graveling, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, Second Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Central City Area Campbell Road. If anybody would like to speak to that, they can start walking up to the microphone now as I read it two more times. Resolution 14-169, Approval of Amended Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-05, paving, grading, and graveling, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, Second Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Central City Area Campbell Road. Third and final reading, Resolution 14-169, Approval of Amended Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-05, paving, grading, graveling, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, Second Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Central City Area Campbell Road. Do I care to come forward? Seeing no one come forward, I'll ask the council for a motion and a second on Resolution 14-169.
Some move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-169.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, the next thing is citizen statements to the council. If you'd like to make a statement regarding something going on in the city, something you think is particularly good, you'd like to comment on it, or maybe a concern that you have here in the city that you'd like the council to be aware of, or at least your viewpoint on that particular thing, please feel free to come up, start walking towards the microphone, which is open. We want you to give your name, address, limit your comments to five minutes, speak directly to the council, do not speak to other items on the regular business agenda, no electioneering. And the council did make one change at its organizational meeting. We've been limiting in the past at having people speak at either the first or the second, not at both. Now, the council's decided people would like to speak at both the first and the second opportunities for citizen statements. They may speak at both as long as they speak to different topics.
Bob Cornell, 548 West Smith. I knew you'd be disappointed if I didn't give you an update of things that are happening at the senior center. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to get there with grandkids, great-grandkids, kids, or whatever for the breakfast with the Easter bunny that was collaborated with the Parks Department, and I can only say I was there and very impressed. My wife and I, or my wife had an appointment at nine in the morning, so we made sure we got there at eight o'clock so we could get fed and be on our way. I didn't realize young kids got up that early. And I think the overall result was somewhere between 500 and 550 people that we fed. So, it was a great fundraiser for both, fundraiser for both the Parks and the senior center. Also, if you're hungry this week, this is our final Thursday of the month, so there will be soup and grilled cheese sandwiches at 11:30. Unfortunately, if you don't get there at 11:30, you don't get anything to eat because seniors like to eat early. And I know people who work, particularly work that around their lunch hour, but the offer is always open. We're also having a great evening next Tuesday night. We have around 400 volunteers, and we're sponsoring the Volunteers Dinner Tuesday night at Beckett's. It's the first time it's been off the campus, but it appears there are a few wine and beer drinkers, so it decided we better move at once and see how many more people we can draw. Obviously, it's not open to the public, but it's a great opportunity to thank those volunteers for what they do for the center. I had the opportunity, I talked to you two meetings ago about the parking situation that I've been working with the Parking Commission on the Grand Parking Lot, and I accepted the invitation of Mr. Huddleston and attended their April meeting. Just to give you a little result of how it was resolved, the Algoma Lot stayed the same. There was no change. But in the lot that was in contention because of the ADA restrictions on the grade of that parking lot, it was decided that down here on 69 and 68 would be removed for handicap. And in Mr. Huddleston's due diligence, he found that 1 and 2, the grade on the west side is much less of a slope than on the right side. So, 1 and 2 are eligible, and they are right next to the sidewalk. So, it's just a matter of somebody in a handicap situation can get out of the sidewalk and get right over to the grand. The one that I can truly say impressed me was currently number 7 next to the grand is the only one that's handicap parking. And there was a lot of discussion on putting more there because over here between 4 and 5 is the door that the ADA is accessible to the grand. So, part of the discussion was to make those all handicap. There was resistance from one member, and they asked me what my opinion was because I've always brought this to the floor for a couple of months. I didn't think it was fair to the business, to the west, that you're going to take all that parking away for handicap. We go out of our way to get business to come downtown, support the downtown, and be successful. My suggestion was leave one or two of those open for the regular parking, and I think we can compromise the situation. So, I haven't read the minutes yet, but I believe what was recommended, that was 1, 2, 3, and 7 would be handicapped, 4, 5, and 6 would be left for the regular parking. So, in my estimation, it was a great effort, and it was also a great compromise. Now, I have two invitations, and they're both directed at Ms. Pansky. Watching your organizational meeting, I believe Mr. Herman suggested, while visiting departments or other things around the city to find out how this all intertwines with each department, as president of the board of directors at the senior center, if I got an invitation for you, you're probably too young to think as seniors do, but the senior, senior center is a very important part of the city, and it's a great, great operation when you look at all the programs and activities. So, I would suggest that you're away convenience and invite you to get together with either Mr. Mauer or Mr. Zimer can set up a tour for you, and take a look and see what you find. I'd be glad to discuss. Okay, I'm getting the motion, but I got one other invitation for you, and that is I chair the Board of Appeals for the city of Oshkosh. I don't believe in my 10 and a half years we've ever had any council person come in because we're kind of dull, it being a legal situation, but if you get an opportunity, stop in to see us. And the final remark is I want to thank the city for the state of the city this past week. I thought it was one of the best that I've ever attended, and I haven't missed one. And I think the relationship of the symphony to how the city departments work with private public sector was an excellent approach to it. So, thank the staff, John.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward at this point?
My name is Patricia Deener. I live at 1316 Bra. I know that we had some flooding this last week. It wasn't as bad as what everybody thought it would be, but it was still flooding. Wanted to know why some of the sewers were almost full to the top, and we waited for a while, and the water still didn't go down. And we didn't know if you guys put something to stop the water, because from my father-in-law's, the lagoon was over, and you come through the tunnel there over to the corner of the laundromat. At one time, they put a drain in it. They put a drain in a lot of places, I found out with this flooding because a neighbor of mine told me he has one. But we wanted to know because the problem is, is we don't want to pump because you're talking, it could be five hours, six hours, because the way it's running. Plus, we have been complaining about people dumping stuff there, and then when my husband's father gets flooded, he's getting all the debris and that that somebody did over the winter months, and then it starts flowing into the yard. And if we got more flooding, we got, probably got two more inches of flooding he would have probably got, had to turn on the pumps to get it going. But we wanted to know if you guys shut something up when it comes from South Park in the longer alley?
One thing, if there's, if there's a particular area when that happens, if you can call Public Works at that time, is there a general response to that?
We called and told the police department that there was flooding in different areas. We had it over on Monroe.
Because I'm sure there are different issues at different areas, so.
Right. No, there was no storm sewers blocked off. That's just the way the rain event, the storm sewers were handled by the rain event.
Okay.
And the non-emergency number of police, that is a good number to call.
Yeah. We called, let one of the lady officers know, you know, it don't matter how much water you got, but the sewers couldn't hold it. It was just backing up and backing up over in our areas, too. And then you try to get over across town, and then you get people that realize how flooded it is, and they run through it, and then they make a more mess for the businesses, and then they could end up flooded.
Unfortunately, we have a little experience with the flooding, and I think in this last case, it matters how, how much volume we get in a short period of time, and we had some circumstances like that. And also, we talked a lot about the ground being frozen, and it takes a long time for that frost to get out of the ground. So, when there's frost in the ground, the water can't penetrate into the ground. So, then there's, there's a lot of runoff, and there's a lot of excess water that we might not ordinarily have. So, I think it was, it was a combination of both of those things in this last rain event that we had.
And I want to bring up, too, I haven't got the chance to bring it up.
We appreciate the information that you are bringing forward.
There are people that care, and a lot of people don't get to be known, but you know, we had a problem with LP Gas this winter, and there was a few people that went and worked hard that, I have friends that I just talked to up in Powell, Wisconsin this past week, and they said it was a bad winter. It means they make their own maple syrup, they run their own rescue squad, and they said it was a very bad winter for a lot of things.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward at this point in time? Seeing no one, then we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda items. This is a group of items that the administration feels are non-controversial in nature, so the council has asked to vote on them as a group of items. So, what's going to happen is I'm going to run through the items, and if you would like to speak to any one of these items as I read it, I'd ask that you come up and make your comments. When we get through with that, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion and a second. If either a council member or a citizen wants a particular item removed from the consent agenda, they can ask, and we'll remove it from the consent agenda for separate consideration. So, I'll start reading right now. Approval of bills presented by the finance director. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from March 6, 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, Jesse Anderson, for alleged damages from a water backup. Progressive Insurance claimant Laura Putzer for alleged damages from an incident involving a city snowplow. AAA Insurance claimant Peter Olson for alleged damages from an incident involving a city vehicle. Ben Creel for alleged injuries from running into bleachers while sledding at West Haven Park. The city of Oshkosh Board of Canvas filing of the official statement of votes cast for the April 1, 2014 election for the city of Oshkosh Common Council declaring Steve Cummings, Steve Herman, and Caroline Pansky as elected. Resolution 14-107, Approval of variance to excess noise limitations. Beats to go for hip-hop benefit concert, "The Power of Hip-Hop," May 31, 2014. Resolution 14-171 has been withdrawn by the staff prior to the meeting. Resolution 14-172, Award bid for mobile storage unit for Oshkosh Public Museum to Montell. Resolution 14-173, Award bid for humidifier additions for Oshkosh Public Museum to B&amp;P Mechanical, Inc. Resolution 14-174, Establish alternate truck route for closures of North Main Street for special events during Bowen Street reconstruction. Resolution 14-175, Approve waiver for Kavanaugh's carriages to allow horses in the city through December 31, 2014. Resolution 14-176, Approve Clean Water Fund Financial Assistance Agreement with the Wisconsin Departments of Natural Resources Administration, DNR, and DOA, and authorize the issuance of sale of up to $5,706,185 worth of sewage system revenue bonds, Series 2014, and provided for other details and covenants with respect thereto. Resolution, Approval of a block party, Empty Lots at corner of Ida Avenue and Franklin Street, May 10, 2014. Now, I'm going to go through a bunch of special events, but I won't say special event each time. Resolution 14-178, March of Dimes to utilize city streets for their March of Dimes, Oshkosh March for Babies, May 3, 2014. Resolution 14-179, Safe Routes to School to Utilize City Streets for Their Oshkosh Community, South Side Bike Rodeo, Jefferson School, May 15, 2014. Resolution 14-180, Tom Taggart to Utilize 539 Campus Place for Their Molly Maguire's Graduation Beer Garden, May 16, 2014. Resolution 14-181, Oshkosh Garden Club to Utilize Grounds of Oshkosh Public Museum for Their Oshkosh Garden Club Plant Sale, May 17, 2014. Resolution 14-182, Paint Art Center and Gardens to Utilize Congress Avenue for Their Festival of Spring, May 17, 2014. Resolution 14-183, Safe Routes to School to Utilize City Streets for Their Oshkosh Community North Side Bike Rodeo, Oklon School, May 22, 2014. Resolution 14-184, Hoagies Bar to Utilize Menominee Park for Their Hoagies Walleye Warm-Up, May 24, 2014. Resolution 14-185, Larry Meads to Utilize South Park for His Memorial Day Reading of Names on War Monument, May 26, 2014. Resolution 14-186, Aurora Foundation, Inc. to Utilize Menominee Park for Their Lombardi Walk for Cancer, Oshkosh, June 7, 2014. Resolution 14-187, St. Jude the Apostle Parish to Hold Their St. Jude the Apostle Parish Picnic, June 13, 14, and 15, 2014. Resolution 14-188, Gabriel Fullitz to Utilize Menominee Park for The Fullitz Wedding, June 14, 2014. Resolution 14-189, Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce to Utilize Opera House Square and Market Street for Their Live at Lunch, June 18, 2014, through August 13, 2014, every Wednesday. Resolution 14-190, Mon Lutheran Outreach Congregation to Utilize Winnebago County Park for Their Mon Outreach Sports Festival, June 21 and 22, 2014. Resolution 14-191, Digital Documents LLC, also known as L&amp;K Productions, to Utilize Opera House Square and Market Street for Their Square Fair, June 21, July 19, August 16, September 20, and October 18, 2014. That's every third Saturday once a month. Resolution 14-192, Players Pizza and Peace Lutheran Church to Utilize South Park for Their Sixth Annual Park Dance, July 11, 2014. Resolution 14-193, Paint Art Center and Gardens to Utilize Congress Avenue for Their Fair on the Green, July 13, 2014. Resolution 14-194, Andrea McCann to Utilize Opera House Square for The Giving Gala, June 26, 2014. Resolution 14-195, Badgers State Outboard Association to Utilize Menominee Park for Their Badgers State Outboard Races, August 30 and 31, 2014. Resolution 14-196, Disallowance of Claim by Rosemary Bettnerick. Resolution 14-197, Disallowance of Claim by Timothy Pischke. Resolution 14-198, Disallowance of Claim by Michael Palmer. Resolution 14-199, Disallowance of Claim by Jamie Haddock. Resolution 14-2000, Disallowance of Claim by Sharon Bradley. Resolution 14-201, Prove Appointments to the Board of Review. Resolution 1402, Approve Agent Changes, Special Class B Licenses, and Class B Fermented Malt License. Lots of activities going on in Oshkosh to keep you busy this summer. I see no one coming forward to speak to any of these. I'll give you one more opportunity. Come forward if you'd like to. Seeing no one getting up and moving forward, I'm going to bring it back to the council for discussion, questions on any items, and then we'll look for approval after that. Any questions, discussion? Actually, I have two. One relates to the Clean Water Fund. This is something that's a little different this year, I believe. Does somebody can talk about the Clean Water Fund here tonight?
Sure. Trina, would you like to come up? And Steve? I do know that we have some good news regard to the, to the interest rates that we can speak to also. Go ahead, Steve.
Clean Water Fund is a program of one run by the state of Wisconsin that's funded through monies that come through the federal government. They're given to states to help provide revolving loan funds for municipal utility projects. And so, we were able to apply for and be approved for a Clean Water Fund loan for our current wastewater treatment plant project, and that's what these funds are being used for. And again, the interest rate is pretty favorable in comparison to what a market rate would be, which I think is around 3.5, and this is 2.6, 2.5, or somewhere in that range. I don't have the number right here.
Okay, this is a little different situation with the funding on it, as I understand it.
And it, this was an opportunity to use a, to get a better interest rate than had we issued a standard sewer revenue bond. So, we're, we're just taking advantage of the program available through the state. We've done that in the past, but during the time that there were some other incentives and reduction in bond rates due to some of the programs of federal government for stimulus, at those times, they were able to get bonding for these types of projects that actually lower rates than the state would offer, but those aren't available anymore, so this provides us with an opportunity to get a lower interest rate.
Thank you. Some other comments?
You stole my thunder, so.
Oh, okay.
Who are you to tell us? Just tell everybody who you are.
My name is Trina Larson, and I'm the new finance director for the city of Oshkosh. I did contact Mike Harrigan today from Ellers, and a sale that was similar to this bond issuance, but was a bond issuance for 20 years, was actually sold at 3.32, so that was about a 60 basis points difference. So that was about a 60 basis points difference. So this is an incredible deal, and will produce significant savings for the City of Oshkosh.
Good, we're glad you're here. Keep on saving us money like that. Okay, thank you. The other one I have a question about is Resolution 14-191, approval of special event Digital Documents LLC, also known as L&amp;K Productions, to utilize Opera House Square on some Saturdays. I have some questions on this. We've spent a long time developing and working the farmer's market on Saturdays. Is this viewed as, and the council I know is concerned about overlapping things at times, is this viewed really as kind of an enhancement of what could happen downtown? And has there been some discussion between the farmer's market and what it looks like a flea market?
There was.
I'm concerned that, I don't want to do anything in which we treat people differently here, or which one has an impact on the other.
It was just checking with Pam to make sure.
I just want to know if there's been discussion.
Make sure my memory was correct, but Dennis Leatherman actually came to the special event committee meeting with her, so he was there, and we did check, it was all coordinated.
Okay. There are please.
There were no issues.
They see it maybe as an enhancement, even bring more people down rather.
I think they see it as a complimentary feature of the farmer's market.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on? I'll look for a motion on the consent agenda in a second.
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, last clerk take the roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carrier 7.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move along, going to pending ordinances, and the first one is ordinance 14-203. I understand from the administration that this really is not quite ready for consideration tonight.
That's right.
For discussion, and so there's going to be a request for the council to lay this over for a month through the May 27 council meeting, if you want to make a couple of comments about that.
This involves an attachment, and Darren can talk about some of the background information that we need to work on.
Yeah, really, really the issue with this particular one that just came up is it's a sewer capacity issue, so what we, when we started to move forward with this particular, With this particular property, the sewer line in that area is, if we start to look at developing this particular property as well as the business park, it may create some issues with sewer capacity, so we want to spend the next month looking, doing an analysis of the sewer capacity in the area to determine if we can annex a portion or get any portion of this property developed within the near future.
Okay, so it looks like it's not quite ready. I know there were some concerns about that, so I'd look for a motion in a second.
Before we go to that, Mayor, I just have a question. Mr. Birch, in the discussions on this property, has there been any discussion on what happened on Riff Road and that whole thing where a developer developed that subdivision, and then when bankrupt, and the sidewalks and street improvement things, property owners didn't want to pay for it because they said the developer was supposed to pay for all those things when they bought their lots? Has that discussion been brought up because council had to make some pretty tough decisions on those property owners because they were under the impression that that was all being taken care by the developer? Have those questions at least been brought up in discussion? Besides the sewer issues?
No, because we haven't got to that point right now. We're at the initial attachment phase, so the developer hasn't put together engineering specs or plans for that development. What we want to do is make sure that we don't annex or attach a piece of property that we actually can't service. We don't, as the city, we don't have enough sewer capacity to serve, you know, to put 400, you know, if we were going to develop it for multiple families, put 400 units on this, and then try and also to develop that business park to the west. So before we, before we would bring this in, we want to make sure that we can service it and that business park.
Okay. And in addition to that, we've also talked to the developer, and he understands, or the person who wants to attach and represent it, and they understand why we're doing it and are in agreement.
And what we're going to do is, and what we're going to do is take the next month, take a look at, is there a possibility to develop any portion of this property? So you can't develop the entire thing, can we get, you know, 10 acres of it developed? So the next month, we'll be able to figure that out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I just go directly to ask for a motion to lay it over?
If you could, to May 27.
Right. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to lay it, I didn't know if I needed to bring it up first and then lay it over. So I'd ask for a motion to lay it over to May 27.
Some move.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, last clerk take the roll call vote on the layover of ordinance 14-203.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carrier 7.
Okay, the next thing is ordinance 14-204. I'll read this, if anybody wants to comment on it, they can come up the microphone. Ordinance 14-204, amend city ordinances pertaining to mobile vending. Anybody like to come forward? Seeing no one come forward, I will bring it back to the council for a motion in a second on ordinance 14-204.
Some move.
Second. Discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Birch.
I just want to make a comment. At the last council meeting, when this was brought up, I had several questions from one of the mobile vendors. I just want to make a statement that it doesn't really have to do with this ordinance, it deals with a different ordinance that the city is looking at, and it has to do with a different permit, so I have no concerns over the changes in this vending ordinance, and I'll be supporting it.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, last clerk take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-204.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carrier 7.
Okay, the next thing is new ordinances, or three new ordinances. These require meetings at two consecutive council meetings. As I read each ordinance, if somebody would like to come up and comment on it, they may comment on it, they'll also have an opportunity to comment on it at the next council meeting. We won't bring it back to the council for a vote tonight, the council will be voting on these the next time. So the first one, ordinance 14-205, approve rezoning 143 Idaho Street and adjacent vacant lots from C2 General Commercial to R2 Two-Family Residents. See no one coming forward. Ordinance 14-206, approval of parking regulation changes on Algoa Boulevard, Central Street, Columbia Avenue, Hamilton Street, Melvin Avenue, Woodstock Street, and 8th Avenue. See no one coming forward, move it back to the, move on to the next ordinance. Ordinance 14-207, approval of changes in short-term parking in the library, Otter East, Pearl, and State Street parking lots. Once again, no one coming forward. Again, these will be brought up the next time, and there'll be opportunity for discussion, and at that time, the council will look at these items for approval. Okay, that takes us to council discussion and direction to the city manager and future agenda items. The first one, future agenda items, we have the health insurance workshop on May 27, 4:45, so we're going to start a little bit earlier. I know it's harder for people who work to start earlier, but I think we want a little more time on this one, so if people could put it on their calendars and just try to get there whenever, whenever you can. Okay, a second item here is updates to the council on items discussed at workshops. I know Mr. Herman wanted to talk a little bit about this.
That's correct, Mayor, thank you very much. I think council, other than Ms. Pansky, because she was on council at the time, remember, we used to get a kind of a flow chart or a sheet that had projects and where they were and where they were pending, and information from whether it was workshops or it was council director, city staff. We haven't gotten one of those charts in over a year, and I think, I know I get asked periodically from citizens about something we vote on at the council, like, just for an example, you know, the strategic plan, there are some things in the strategic plan that we approved and being worked on, but we haven't gotten the updates. The other part was, we made some zoning changes so apartments could be built out off of Soda Creek, I believe it is, off of Y. Nothing's happened since the zoning change was made, you know, is it funding issues, or what's that issue? There was another one where we made zoning change for Veterans Apartment Complex, built near Mike's family restaurant. Again, a couple of people asked me because one is a veteran and he would like to see an apartment complex. So I guess where I'm coming is, I'd like to get back to having that chart and having updates on a regular basis of things that council approves, because it's hard as the year goes along to just always remember what we approved from, you know, meetings. Means, you know, we can obviously go back and get our minutes that are on the website and things, and pull the things out of our binders that are important, but I think if we go back to that spreadsheet that we had, or if council has any other ideas or suggestions to keep us updated so that when citizens call or questions come up later on, that we're still briefed on that. Plus, and the other one is, just recently, we got a really good city manager's newsletter, and we haven't had too many packets of newsletters since the first year, and I know Mr. Roloff's been awful busy on committees and other organizations, but it's really the best way for council to be kept up to date on what's going on, and I'm sure other council members have their concerns on those issues too. So just, I'd like to go back to that spreadsheet that he used to give us with our council agenda and information so that we kind of have an idea where projects are going and when they're completed and off to the next project, I guess. Other council?
Mr. Mayor, as a new council member, I would definitely appreciate a flow sheet, if you will, of the current projects in the city. I think that would be a lovely asset to the information we already have.
I think I understand, Councilmember Herman, and he was kind enough to talk to me about this in advance in the meeting, and be happy to talk to city manager Roloff and see what we can do to better communicate.
Anybody else? Comments on it? Okay, thanks, that's Mr. Herman for bringing that up, and it's going to be valuable to move forward. So you'll pass that on, I understand? Next item on there, actually, on revised agenda, council member announcements and statements, pub crawl update, I had that put on there. I just wanted to bring people up to date with where we are right now. With the last two to three council meetings, we've had some discussions about the pub crawl, various aspects of it, from is it good or not, or whatever. But also, two primary concerns have been the fact that this year, a special events request was not made, so it was unclear. The planning was much more difficult this year as a result of that for the police department, number one, and number two, it was not clear that we were going to get paid by anyone, so the council had discussed with the city manager the idea that we might assess some tavern owners that appeared to participate from the observation. We would assess them, take the total amount of extra cost, extraordinary cost, and allocate it among them. Fortunately, a positive thing on the last two items was Mr. Kubiak, who was sort of the leader of this, it's hard to identify, I'm not quite sure what title I would put on him, but he's the one we've identified. To his credit, came in to talk to city manager last Wednesday and indicated that he was looking at paying for the extraordinary cost, and also wanted to sit down with the city manager and some others and talk about how in the future, if there is a pub crawl, how the planning could be carried out in a little better fashion, and how the cost could be taken care of, so we don't get into this meeting each time, or discussion each time that we've gone through over the past three meetings. So that's positive from a lot of people's viewpoints. I don't know exactly, I don't know any of the details of it, I think there's still more to be worked out, but it's positive, and we are going to step back from moving forward, asking the council for the authority to issue the special charges on the taverns. So I think that's good news too, because I don't think, I don't think we were real happy with doing that, other than the fact we felt we had to, in fairness to the taxpayers, and clearly the tavern owners were not happy, so this has got to be good news for them, although hopefully they might participate in this payment of the fees if Mr. Kubiak can work out. That's all I know about it. If anybody has any other comments or questions regarding it.
Mr. Mayor, do we have any idea of these extraordinary costs?
We are pulling together those costs right now, so we should have it shortly, but it hasn't been compiled completely yet.
I think there was original estimate in the $6,000 category, and then what has to happen is they have to get all the base stubs and people from people and add them up, but I think that was the ballpark figure, as I recall.
Right, but we actually, we only charge for things that we actually do and time actually put in, so the estimates are sometimes not right on the numbers, so.
I assume we'll get feedback on those numbers, we'll also probably get feedback typically from the police chief of any concerns he might have had with respect to how things went, good, bad, otherwise. So we should get some more feedback. Okay, once again, we come to citizen statements to the council. It's another opportunity if citizens would like to come to the microphone and comment on something going on in the city, good or bad. Again, I ask that you come up, give your name and address, limit your comments to no more than five minutes, speak directly to the council, no election hearing, and nothing on the agenda.
My name is Patricia Deener, I wanted to bring up Good Friday, there was a, on Facebook or on the internet. I'd like to thank the two dentists that came, one came from Bryan Lane, and one was from Oshkosh, to let them know that they took a Good Friday, holy day, to take time to do 105 patients, extractions, pulling, I mean x-rays, and teeth cleaning. You know, there's not many that do it. There's a few dentists in these small businesses that really do things. Dr. Schultz does it, Dr. Smith does it. There are people that sit back and never get to be known, just like Joe at Father Carr. He's an outer gamey cop, but he's doing other things that he needs to do, and they never get recognized for what they do, and I really appreciate that they took the time.
Good point, thanks for mentioning that.
Corneille, 548 West Smith. Because the pub crawl was in discussion, is it proper or improper to make a comment on it?
You could make a comment on it, because it really was, tonight it really wasn't on the agenda as an agenda.
One of the things that bothered me was what happened that evening, because it was the night at the grand with the Oshkosh on Broadway, which put a lot more cars on the road, and unfortunately, when we got out, it was after 10:30, because we didn't stay for Act 3, it was way past pushing our bedtime. But it was also foggy, it was lightning, it was thundering, it was sort of a miserable night to be driving, and we were going down Jackson, going north to go home, on the corner of east and, or west Irving, there was a bunch of male, can't say college students, because I don't want to condemn them for something if they were not involved, but they were standing on the left corner waiting. Now, at this time of the night, the lights are not stop and go, the walk lights are not working, but they were waiting until a car got near the intersection, and it would casually walk in the crosswalk, crossing the street daring anybody to see what are you going to do as a driver? And, you know, obviously, it's a very dangerous situation, and it isn't something that you as a council have control over, in fact, it's difficult for the police department to control something like that because of the incident. My point being is that there's more related to this pub crawl than just watching what's happening and recovering costs for what happens around Main Street and other areas. It's a very dangerous situation that night, and I don't know if there's an answer, I don't know how you could control something like that, but I wanted to be aware that it does happen.
I'd say that was one of the, the third items was the pub crawl itself, we didn't resolve that issue.
My name is Deborah Barcy, I live 600 Merritt Avenue. This week is severe weather awareness week, and Thursday, they're going to sound off the sirens about 1:30 or so. If it's not Thursday, it'll be Friday then.
Thank you, thank you for your weather spotting that you do also on a regular basis. Okay, that takes us to city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is just an agreement related to our inflow and infiltration project. It's designed to do some flow monitoring over an extended period of time, so we can see what's going on in our system. That's really what this agreement is about here with the ADS Environmental Services.
Okay, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.[1769.83]